Okay, we'll call this council meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Need a motion for adoption of the minutes?
Resolve that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held at City Hall on Monday, April 25th, 2016 be adopted as circulated.
Moved by Councilor Budz, seconded by Councilor Draycott. All those in favor? And that's carried. We have no delegations this evening, so we'll move right into hearings. We'll open the public hearing for rezoning bylaw 16-8643, 709, 716, 718, 720, 722, and 724 will obey. Is there anyone here to speak to the hearing?
Chair Ferris, I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Councilor Budz?
So just as a reminder, if we close the hearing, then there'll be no opportunity for the public to comment on this. This will be up to council at that point. So final reminder, if there's anyone to speak to that. Hearing none. Resolve that the public hearing for rezoning bylaw 16-8643, 709, 716, 718, 720, 722, 724 will obey now be closed. Council is familiar with this, as we already gave this first reading, so I'm not going to go through the complete detail of this motion. But as we know, there's the request to change some of the zoning. This application was circulated with all city departments, and as mentioned previously, there was the note that there was some concerns expressed regarding one existing single-family dwelling or residence between two or three residential multiple-family zones if approved. But I think that if there was some concerns beside city department, that would have been addressed to residents in the area. And as of the writing, council had not, or administration had not received any written objections to the proposed rezoning scheme. So at least from my perspective, filling in for Councilor Drieger, I'm confident with the recommendation to move forward. So with that in mind, it is a recommendation of council, the City of Portage Prairie to approve the application to rezone the land known as 709, 716, 718, 720, 722, 724 will obey and legally described as Lot 5, Block 4, Plan 1741, lots 41 through 45, Block 1, Plan 1741, Parish of Portage Prairie, from R1 residential single-family zone to R3 residential multiple-family zone, and that bylaw 16-8643 be read a second time.
Moved by Councilor Budz, seconded by Councilor Fraz. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion? And that's carried.
And finally, that bylaw number 16-8643 be read a third time, finally passed, signed, and sealed.
Moved by Councilor Budz, and seconded by Councilor Fraz. All those in favor of the motion? And that's carried.
Seconded the first.
Councilor Fraz? We'll open the public hearing for variation PC 15-16. This is for Jim and Catherine Ogilvy. Is there anyone here to speak to the hearing?
Just that we're here to answer questions if anybody has them.
Okay, thank you. Jim Ogilvy?
Seeing that there is no one to speak to it other than Mr. Ogilvy, be it resolved that the public hearing for variation PC 15-16, Jim and Catherine Ogilvy, now be closed.
Moved by Councilor Budz, seconded by Councilor Draycott. All those in favor? And that's carried.
So I know council has reviewed this application. As highlighted there, the front yard requirement of 7.5 meters to be reduced to 5.49 meters, and the rear yard requirement of 7.5 meters to be reduced to 3.66 meters. And there is a sketch that is provided. I know council has reviewed it. The building is in a R1 residential single-family zone. As per common occurrence, the application has been circulated to the various city departments with no concerns being expressed, and public notices have been sent to all property owners within 100-meter radius. So it is a recommendation of this committee and ISO move that the council, City of Portage Prairie, approve the variation request of Jim and Catherine Ogilvy to vary the front yard requirement of 7.5 meters to be reduced to 5.49 meters, and the rear yard requirements of 7.5 meters to be reduced to 3.66 meters at the property known as 104 Fourth Street Southwest, which is legally described as Lot 1, Plan 880, Parish of Portage Prairie.
Moved by Councilor Budz, seconded by Councilor Fraz. Any questions or comments on the motion? Councilor Fraz?
I just want to clear from the sketch, is the purpose of the variance to allow a garage to be built?
No, a sunroom.
A sunroom?
Yeah. It's on the south side and will face the lake.
Okay, any further questions? All those in favor of the motion? And that's carried. We'll move into committee. Councilor Budz, Finance, Legislative, and Property Committee, please.
Thank you. The first item up on my agenda will be the tax levy bylaw, the second and third readings, but that requires a public hearing, which was advertised to take place at 7:00. So I will delay that and cover it under new business, and we'll do that at 7:00. Other than that, I've got the first quarter reports, which were presented to committee at our last council meeting, and so that concludes my report here tonight.
City Planning and Economic Development, Councilor Budz again, please.
So there's two items that were dealt with in hearings. The third one is the building reports, again, that were reviewed by committee. First quarter report was presented by Pred, and there were some comments in there from me stating that we just wanted to change up that report from what it currently is comprised of and maybe expand on it a little bit, to which I think Douglas commented that he would do that for our next report. So barring any questions in that portfolio, that concludes that report as well.
Thank you, Councilor Budz. Community Services Committee, Councilor Fraz?
Thank you, your worship. The only items we have are the first quarter reports that were reviewed last council meeting. Those reports are from Parks, PCRC, and the youth council, Donovan Hillman, presented his report last council meeting. Unless there's any questions on those reports, that would be all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Fraz. Water Works Committee, Councilor Wall, please.
Yes, your worship. Committee reviewed the first quarter reports from the Water Works Committee, the water pollution control facility, and the water treatment plant, and the annual reports from the water pollution control facility, and those will be available on the website shortly.
Thank you, Councilor Wall. Transportation Committee, Councilor Draycott, please.
Thank you, your worship. Last time we met, the Transportation Committee reviewed the engineering report for the first quarter as well as the transportation report for the first quarter. And again, unless there's any questions, then that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, this evening, Councilor Fraz, please.
Thank you, your worship. Last council meeting, we had some discussion, both from Fire Chief Carpenter and Inspector Head from the RCMP. And we reviewed those reports, and they're available again. Just maybe want to make a quick comment about how fortunate we are that we're not facing the public safety risk that a city such as Fort McMurray is currently facing, and we know that it's currently hot and dry and fire season all over the country. So unless somebody has something to add about that, that would be all I have tonight.
Did have a question, Councilor Fraz, for you or for Chief Carpenter. Now, the department's been very busy the last while, both in the City of Portage Prairie and the RM. There's a provincial fire ban right now, but there's still burning on going on in the RM. Why is that?
It's my understanding that the RM does not have a blanket burning ban, but to speak to the details on that, I would defer to Chief Carpenter.
Basically, the provincial fire ban is in relationship to any land that's owned by the province, be it crown land or the provincial parks. They have a burning ban on that in the province of Manitoba. Beyond that, each municipality is responsible to implement their own fire ban, and they have to have a fire bylaw in order to implement that. At the present time, the RM of Portage does not have that in place. It is their wish, desire that they do not want to do that. So that's where that sits at now. We have to put that in mind. That's the decision that they've made. Conditions are very dry out there right now, and we definitely do not recommend anybody to burn. If they do, they have to use some better judgment when doing so. I mean, accidents do happen. That's why we are there to help them when these fires do occur, but please, you know, keep that in mind and respect that because conditions are very dry presently.
So, okay, so the RM does not have a burning ban in place right now?
Yeah, that's correct. Again, they don't, there's a process where you have to have a fire bylaw in place, which in turn, a fire ban can then be implemented, and that is not in place at this present time.
So not to put you on the spot, but in your professional opinion, would safety benefit from this burning bylaw if it was brought in for the RM?
It is something that I truly feel that it would benefit, the fact where sometimes we all need a little guidance, we'll say, in reference to helping them in the decision-making of not burning. So then, if a ban is in place, then it just gives them some better direction not to do so, and if they do so, then you can implement fines. Anytime a person does decide to burn, they can definitely be held liable as far as if the fire gets out of control, goes to neighbors, and heaven forbid if it burns down some property of theirs. So these are all the things that you need to consider. And again, most municipalities that I'm aware of in the province of Manitoba have one, but again, that's the RM of Portage decision, and that's all I can speak to that.
Okay, thank you, Chief Carpenter. Are there any further questions for Councilor Fraz? We have no deferred business. We do have new business. First item is Crescent Lake Water Quality Improvement Study Award. Community Services.
Thank you. This is an issue that's been some time coming. Several years ago, we had a lot of questions and discussion around the quality of water in Crescent Lake, and more recently, there's been a fair amount of action on the file as to what uses of Crescent Lake would be permitted. And so currently, we have some results from the issuance of a request for proposals on water quality improvement study in Crescent Lake. And we have received a couple of responses to that request. We issued a request for proposals for consulting services for the development of strategies to improve Crescent Lake water quality. The scope of the work includes conducting background water vegetation and sediment assessment, assessing the needs for the use of the lake, and determining possible options for water quality improvement, and then developing specific strategies for the reduction of nutrients, algae, undesirable aquatic vegetation, and parasites, and identifying maintenance requirements, developing a public education and consultation plan, and preparing some cost estimates for possible future remediation work. The goal of the project is to have a long-term strategy to improve water quality in Crescent Lake. This will eventually allow increased recreational use and reduce the use of chemical weed control, could also reduce odors and improve the aesthetics of the lake. Three copies of this request for proposals were issued. Native Plant Solutions, a subsidiary of Ducks Unlimited, and North-South Consultants, in partnership with KGS Engineering, submitted proposals, which were evaluated according to policy ENG/F. The proposal from North-South Consultants demonstrated a very good understanding of the objectives of the project. Most of the tasks identified were clearly explained and include a comprehensive background water quality, vegetation, and sediment assessment on three dates through the open water season at three locations on the lake and one from the river. One item which was not clearly and fully addressed was the assessment of the contribution of flows and contaminants from the land drainage system. North-South has some experience working with the City of Portage Prairie when they conducted water quality monitoring on the Assiniboine River. The second proposal from Native Plant Solutions demonstrated a very good understanding of the project and includes a very qualified project team. Most of the items noted in the request, the scope were identified and discussed in relatively good detail. However, the proposed field work to assess the current state of the lake was not as comprehensively explained. Following the technical proposal evaluation, however, the time allotted for the field work is similar in both fee proposals, but Native Plant Solutions budgeted fewer funds for water and sediment testing than North-South. They did, however, propose to donate more time to developing options and significantly more time developing the project. And there's kind of a chart which rates the proposals on several different categories, and in the final column lists the cost of each company's proposal. And you'll see that North-South Consultants is the lowest bid. The city budget for this project, which was budgeted several years ago, was $34,000, and the low proposal is $14,626 over budget. There are no obvious components of the scope of work to cut from the proposed project, and no provincial funding has been budgeted, and it is unknown if there's a relevant funding program. Funding might be available from the Green Municipal Fund or Community Places. For the time being, administration proposes that the additional funding required be taken from the community development plan budget as we anticipate a surplus in this budget line item. The draft report is due by September 26th, 2016. And with that information as background, it is the recommendation of the Community Services Committee that a contract for consulting services for the development of strategies to improve Crescent Lake water quality be awarded to North-South Consultants Limited for the proposed fee of $41,236 plus $7,391 in disbursements excluding taxes, and that the funding beyond the budget be allocated from the community development plan budget. And ISO move.
Moved by Councilor Fraz, seconded by Councilor Wall. Any questions or comments on the motion? Councilor Budz?
I have a question and a comment. I guess my comment firstly would be just to assure council that there is enough funds within the appropriate request from the community development, that it's not a concern that the funding will fall short in that area. We're actually running a little bit under budget in that department, so there's no fear that, you know, taking from that will replenish anything. The other part, though, that I just wanted maybe some clarification on, the point was that there was not real good explanation in terms of the impact on the lake as it relates to our land drainage system. And then from this company getting awarded a proposal, does our team feel that that is a significant shortfall in what we'd be paying for in terms of the effect that it could have on Crescent Lake if it's not being addressed in the report adequately?
I'd pass that on to Kelly.
Yeah, I thought you might.
Well, that's not a significant portion of the study, but it is something that we want to address. I did discuss it with North-South Consultants. They will address it in their report.
So you feel confident that when we get in the report, that'll address that?
Yes, I feel confident that they'll address it.
That's all I have, then.
And just to be clear, Councilor Budz, the land drainage influence to the lake is what's collected off the streets in terms of storm drains and so on, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay, any further questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion? And that's carried. Includes our new business. We have no old business. As Councilor Budz mentioned, we do have a hearing. It's been advertised for 7:00 PM, so we are going to keep it 7:00 PM. There's people that are coming up for that specifically. So we are going to adjourn council and move into committee, and we are adjourned at 6:20 PM. We'll move right into committee, and committee, just for people that haven't been here before, it is open to the public. It's open to the media. And I invite you to stay for it.
Thank you. A couple items in committee for us to talk about is, number one is the award for our janitorial services. Hard to believe that this tender is already up. It's gone out, and there's three companies that have submitted information and a price for us to consider. One of them is our current janitorial service provider, and so administration has gone through and in this report has indicated kind of the pros and cons of all of them in a similar fashion as they've always done. There has been, honestly, some concerns with our current provider in terms of the ramp-up of services when they first got on the contract and their inability to provide the necessary requirements at the RCMP office in terms of the Public Safety Building for clearances. There also has been, somewhat of a regular occurrence, issues with cleanliness and the jobs being performed with notes being left for reminders for areas that needed some additional attention. So I will be bringing forth at our next meeting that the actual award be given to Mighty Mop Janitorial, and that ends up being the lowest price. And we do have the comprehensive, or there's been a comprehensive assessment done of this and actually some references, which is assuring that we're not, you know, sometimes you get what you pay for, and this is the lowest bid, but we take this bid knowing that there has been other people that we have reached out to and the positive responses in that regard. Is there any questions on that particular item? Yes?
Hey, just had a question. Reading through the report, it stated that at first, we had some issues with our current contractor, and then those issues tended to go away when they had a local person with the specific security clearance that they require. Would our, if we go ahead with Mighty Mop Janitorial for their bid, would they be employing a local person as well? Or?
That I don't think was in the bid. Correct me if I'm wrong, nor is it a requirement of the bid.
Of course, just being a concern from the last contractor that it was not a local person, and once a local person came on, then part of that was remedied. That just came as a point for me, but...
Is there anything in there, Jim, that you wanted to comment on?
The only thing I could say is it's difficult to dictate the contractor, who they employ. We know from the RCMP's perspective that it takes a few months to get the security clearances in order. One would hope that they potentially approached the person that's doing it now and used their security clearance because it's valid, but can't control that.
Okay, thank you.
We have been talking about potentially next time splitting the contract. Have one for the RCMP because their requirements are so different than the rest of the city buildings. That'll be for next time.
Thanks.
The other item was a colimarium agreement. That is with Gwynn and Simpson, and this is more clerical than anything. Just some history, in 2006, the City of Portage Prairie entered into an agreement with Gwynn and Simpson to build one colimarium, and that is for 48 niches, and that's just for cremated remains. This unit was installed and has been filled up. So in 2013, Mr. Clark Gwynne approached our cemetery foreman and indicated he was ready to implement the next phase, but unfortunately, this did not get to administration at the time, and I think that was where the breakdown in communication occurred. And there was another colimarium built on site, which did not capture, that particular unit was not captured in our initial agreement. So when they came again in this year, when Simpson approached the city seeking permission to add another one, that is when more information came to light. So negotiations ensued at that point in time, and so we wanted to make sure through this amendment that all three of them were captured. So the proposed amendment recognizes the additional colimarium and the terms from the original agreement, and obviously, moving forward, any new proposed colimarium will be negotiated with suppliers and installed in a designated area at the cemetery. So the agreement is attached there, and it is the standard agreement, obviously, with the updates as mentioned. So I'll be bringing that forth. Was there anything, any comments or questions on that?
Thank you, Councilor Budz. And City Planning, Economic Development, and Councilor Budz again, please.
So there'll be one variation request, and that's for the Fletcher at 700 Tupper Street North. It is there for your perusal. I do believe in this situation, the residents unfortunately had their garage burned, and now they want to replace that structure, although they want it to make it a little bit larger. So they are requesting some variances there with regards to encroachment spaces, et cetera. So I'll be recommending approval, or I guess Councilor Drieger will be recommending that we approve that variation. And barring any questions on that particular item, that would conclude Councilor Drieger's committee report.
Okay, just one comment for you as the chair tonight of economic development. I had the opportunity to attend the annual general meeting of the Manitoba Chamber of Commerce hosted by the Portage Chamber of Commerce Friday night at Southport, and the local chamber did a very good job. They brought a lot of people in, put on a great event. I understand the rest of the weekend went quite well, too, so your chair is the liaison with the chamber, so if you could pass those comments along.
Absolutely. I think it's important to recognize, thank you for bringing that up, and Manitoba Chamber also recognized that the Portage and District Chamber of Commerce is one of the oldest Chamber of Commerce recognized in the province, so there's a lot of history there. I was remiss, actually, also in just making sure that we did provide Douglas from Pred any, if there is any additional information that you would like to share with council during their committee meeting as it relates to economic development, now's your time if you had anything to bring up.
In regards to the chamber function?
Or in general?
Just a small note.
Douglas, could I just ask you to use the mic?
Actually, I can add one small note. Our local chamber is actually one of the oldest chambers in the country. Not something that should be taken lightly in regards to the chamber. That would be my comment.
All right, then that does conclude my report.
Okay, thank you both. Community Services Committee, Councilor Fraz, please.
Thank you, your worship. Couple of items. First one relates to a cherished tradition, July 1st celebrations, and we're looking to do the standard road closures for the purpose of fireworks and other activities on, in Island Park related to Canada Day celebrations. I'll bring that forward next meeting. The second item is sort of fast becoming a tradition as well, where we're getting a request from Harvest Call First Nations to do a gospel tent meeting on the grounds of North Memorial School, and it's an event that's been taking place for a number of years. There have been in the past some concerns about the event running late into the night with loud music, and that has, we've made a couple of different adjustments, if I can put it that way, to the agreement, to bring that back to 11:00 at night for the past year, and this year, they're asking to have one night at midnight, I believe, Saturday night at midnight. And if there's any questions about that?
But the recommendation that'll be brought forward will be 11:00 end time every night? I believe that's what it says, is that?
11:00, yeah.
So I think that this isn't new to us, and I think we've approved it every year. Is there any concerns from addressing the noise issue other than what we have here?
No, and having talked to people in the neighborhood, they're quite pleased that the festivities ended at 11:00 instead of 12:00, and that seems to have satisfied them.
Can I comment on this?
No, but we do have a question period. This won't be decided tonight. This is just, this will be coming up in the next council meeting. Soon as we're finished in committee, we're going to have question period, and you're welcome to ask questions from the floor.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Councilor Fraz from council?
I do have another item to bring forward. The other item to bring forward is that we need to establish, or would like to establish, some mosquito control policy. Currently, what we're doing is responding to provincial requests to fog for mosquitoes with malathion when there's any indication of a high... when there's any indication of a high mosquito count or risk of West Nile disease. Our main mosquito control activity is larva sighting. What we're looking to do is establish a policy, a list of guidelines that tells us or informs us on what type of chemicals are best to use, establishes more specifically the protocol as to when we respond to complaints and how we do the mosquito counts. And there's quite a lengthy report on what that policy could look like and we'll bring that forward for discussion and approval next time.
Any questions for Counselor Fraz on that item? Counselor Buds?
Sorry. I was just wondering, I think it's a good idea for us to get a policy that is a little bit, provides parameters that everyone can understand. I guess when I read the report, it talked a lot about landing times. So if one person is available, that person will count the number of mosquitoes landing on the front of their body over a 10-minute period and then that'll determine whether or not there's fog. And so my question would be, is that a common practice in other cities on how that is handled? And if so, is that a successful way to do it? Where did this come up from in terms of how, that's how we decide on the foggy portion?
I'm not familiar with the details of that. I don't know, will you see the mosquito trap kind of count?
Mr. Brayden?
Yeah, the mosquito landing count procedure is actually a procedure developed by the province and that's what we follow. I can't really speak for other municipalities, but presumably they would be doing the same thing. Other municipalities I know have mosquito traps and they count mosquitoes. Our mosquito traps are managed by the province and they're more interested in looking at the kulix tarsalis mosquitoes for the West Nile virus.
So in your expert opinion, do you think that a result of this policy and putting in the 10-minute landing period, would we see more fogging, the same amount of fogging or potentially less fogging as we've seen in the past in our city?
In my expert opinion?
That's, yeah.
I don't, I can't answer that. I'm not sure how that's going to shake out.
Because I'd hate to see us by putting this policy in place, actually put in a policy that has less fogging because I know that there are proponents that say that they do not like fogging in our city and it does not work as much as larva sighting and I think that the science may dictate that, but there is no question that residents, myself included, feel that when we fog for mosquitoes, they are far less of a nuisance than they are before we fog. So I would not want to have this policy put in place if we're going to fog less than we currently have.
Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but that method of assessing the landings is not new. I mean, that's how we've been doing it for several years. It's just that now we've put it to paper.
Yeah, it's, we haven't been following the procedure exactly as established by the province. We've been doing like a bare arm count and that is not, that's not a safe, necessarily a safe way of doing mosquito counts, especially when we're dealing with West Nile virus. You don't want to expose yourself to mosquitoes, right? As much as possible, so without, without protection of some sort, so. So this is fully clothed, dark suit and ideally there's two people doing the counts.
I think it's, I think it's also fair to make sure the public understands that if they are opposed to fogging, they can make the request that their property be skipped. That's part of the policy as well.
And I hate to kick a dead mosquito, but did, were we not, we weren't fogging proactively as a city in the past very regularly. It was more so to deal with provincially mandated high West Nile virus mosquito counts, correct?
Yeah, I would say we did the occasional nuisance mosquito fogging based, basically on, I guess, the assessment of park staff mostly. So if they were exposed to a lot of mosquito bites, then it was determined that, you know, we have an issue and fogging would take place. Yeah, and then the province has mandated on occasion fogging for West Nile virus or kulix tarsalis mosquito control.
Almost afraid to ask, but are there any further questions, Counselor Buds?
I just know that the last time we fogged, we were very short of malathion, so I was just wondering if we have much or in stock for 2016 for all the fogging that we're going to do. I have no further questions as it relates to mosquitoes.
Okay, well I have one point of clarification. You can correct me if I'm wrong. This control, mosquito control policy will not supersede the provincial and there are no exceptions to spraying when the province orders spraying for West Nile. Is that correct? Is that still the way it is?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
And that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Counselor Fraz. Water Works Committee, Counselor Wall, please.
Water Works Committee has nothing this evening, Your Worship.
Thank you. Transportation Committee, Counselor Draycott.
Thank you, Your Worship. Transportation Committee has nothing to report this evening.
Public Safety Committee, tonight Counselor Fraz for Counselor Espy.
Thank you, Your Worship. The Public Safety Committee has nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. So that concludes committee. Other than, this is the first time, I believe, we've done question period at this timeframe, so question period, members in the gallery and the public can step forward and ask a question. It doesn't have to be related to items on this evening's agenda. And I know, Chris, I believe you had a question?
Yes. Go up there or?
No, it's up to you.
I'm sure you can hear me.
Okay.
It's regarding the Harvest Gospel Meetings you're calling them? They're requesting, I wrote a letter last year.
Oh, sorry, Chris. I'm told we do want you to come up so that it can be recorded. Sorry.
Close? Good?
Good.
Okay, my name is Chris Gibson. I live on Good Dale Drive. Last year I wrote a letter regarding, we didn't know what was going on at North Memorial School, other than the noise level was atrocious. From 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM, my windows were bouncing. And then you wrote me a letter on September 8th, 2015, telling me what was going on and you called it a gospel tent meetings. Meetings, I should be able to talk and you hear me. I don't think this is the right name for it, but why is it on school property? When we have the fairgrounds, we have Republic Park, maybe that corner new thing over there for community access. It's in the darkest corner and they turn that amplifier on louder and louder as the hour goes on. So I don't think windows need to be bouncing and it doesn't need to be that loud and it shouldn't be on, sorry, on school grounds. We have other facilities that this can happen at. So my question is, why is it on the school grounds and you're letting the noise level go that loud? I know we have a noise bylaw, but...
I'll try to answer that question and certainly you can correct me if I'm wrong. They would have asked the school board for permission.
Okay.
I believe it was, they felt a fair bit of...
It's PRA.
PRA property, okay. And part of it was, I believe they felt quite a few of their congregation were in that area. We did take note of your letter, Chris, and we've taken some steps, including an earlier time to wind it down and we took note of the noise and we're hoping these changes make for a more productive event this summer and less taxing on the neighborhood.
Okay. So we're going to 11 and it's going to be loud? Because I just heard, what, they want a day for midnight now?
Yeah, that's been turned down. That was a request.
Okay.
That's been turned down. It'll be 11 o'clock.
And if the noise is bouncing your windows, what do we do? Because you'll approve this.
Turn it off, please. Call the RCMP.
Okay, because I find that's one dark corner over there. Okay. I got your number. It's on speed dial.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions from the gallery?
Kidding?
Mr. Naught.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a laugh hearing Counselor Buds flogging the fogging, but that's good because I don't like mosquitoes either. I have four questions and I'll take my turn. The first question is to the youth counselor, Donovan, Counselor Hillman. And when does your term finish and have you recruited someone to replace you?
Well, thank you for the question, Mr. Naught. The, I can address the first question. My term concludes at the last meeting of August, so we only have one meeting in August and I believe it's August 9th, 10th, something like that where my term would conclude. As to finding my replacement, I believe that would be council's decision and I believe the process will begin in September.
Just further to that, the process will begin in September through both high schools. This will be, the word will be put out to both West Park and the Portage Collegiate Institute and I think Counselor Hillman probably has, he's certainly raised the bar in terms of interest and I think there are a number of younger students that have noticed some of those activities and there should be a fair bit of interest, we anticipate, in September. Next question?
Forty questions.
Okay, Mr. Maxwell, will?
Mr. Mayor, counselors, fellow citizens. I can't hear you, Mike, because I misread the iPad today. I thought we were going to discuss boats on the lake. I thought that was going to be the discussion tonight. But I sit here and listen. We're doing $47,000 to test the lake water. Why? Because we're told we don't own it. The government owns it. So why would we spend any money on it? I mean, the easy way to test the water is send a tester, win a pick for five bucks. They'll tell you whether it's contaminated or not, how bad it is. But I just, I could say forty questions. I've never heard anybody tell me what it's going to cost to build a ramp, the new dock, the parking spots for the boats and the cars, all these things that take place, putting boats in the lake. How much money is it going to cost the taxpayers? Does anybody have those numbers?
No, we don't.
Okay. We have less than 75 people attended a meeting for improvements of Saskatchewan Avenue. They picked the plan. You made the statement in the paper. The citizens picked the plan. We go to the Island Park PCU building, we have another committee meeting and we picked the plan for less than 100 people for the new bridge. 602 people said no to boats in the lake. How many more do you need? Why don't we end it? Why are we carrying it on? Why are we holding meetings and paying overtime to four people? Two volunteers and four people are getting paid overtime to go to these meetings. And I'm sure these two gentlemen would much fear to spend their time with their families. So why are we doing it? Where's the end come?
The end will come after September the 15th. We will make submissions to the federal government. We will determine whether we're asking for restrictions. We don't have jurisdiction. I think it's been out there in the media. The federal government has the ability to put restrictions on the use of that lake or not. We will be making those requests and we don't have a date. The deadline for submitting those requests is September 15th. We don't have a timeframe for when they respond to us.
If you phone the federal government, they'll tell you they have control over running water, rate lakes and rivers. We've got a man-made pond. If it's stagnant water, if we don't pump water and request it from the Central Boyne River, it's nothing. So tell me how the government has control of it. And right now, you're going to be, 10 years from now, because right now the federal government is trying to dump responsibility on each province. I want to go in the paper, that big article on it. The provinces don't want it, but the federal government wants to get rid of the responsibility. So why are we talking? This is not a lake. We keep referring to our lake. It's not a lake. It's a man-made pond. So why do we keep thinking the government has control?
Well, that's because that's what we've been told.
When I phoned them, they told me they only controlled moving water. If you look the lake up in dictionary, it tells you it's spring-fed water. It's not spring-fed.
Well, if you, if you can give us the name of anybody that will say they don't have control, that we have control, we'd be happy to talk to them. We really would.
In the meantime, we just keep spending money. $47,000 today. For what? How many check? Read the city hall. How many times has this lake been tested and checked and how many engineers and how many people have made reports on it? Go back and look. Seems every council wants to get something on the lake. I'm cheap, $47,000, a lot of money. We could fix some streets. That's all. But I did have 40 other questions.
Okay, well, we're...
No, the lady didn't own the file for me. According to the iPad, it said she's going to be here tonight. We're going to talk to the lake, but it didn't happen.
Okay.
I'll keep my questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the gallery?
I have a question about the Crescent man-made pond, but I'll leave that in abeyance for a moment. A question for the chairman of the Finance Committee who in today's budget or financial plan presentation said that, as I read it, that there will be no increases on taxes because of debt for the next 10 years. On what basis do you predict that prognostication?
I think what the quote indicates is that through our 10-year capital plan, it doesn't allow for tax increases. That is the, that's a comment and that's a, that's the way we've been doing our capital planning for the last, well, since I've been in this post. So we don't, when we build the capital plan, we don't build automatic tax increases into that plan to fund it. That's the, that's the quotation. Now, I've also been indicated a saying, and I know I have, that we may have to incur debt and we will through infrastructure expenditures as relates to water treatment. And to say that we wouldn't entertain tax increases through that process, I think is naive. And I think that it is something that our community would face if we had a significant amount of debt issuance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman of the committee. It's just that the, on the reading I did, it was bolded and I thought, oh, well, there's a statement. The second question is also on the budget, finance and forecast and that is that the, I didn't see, I haven't read the financial plan yet. Is there a feature built in for the new bridge? And in that case, what is the prognosis for the engineering study for the bridge? What's happening? When will they get it? I haven't seen no activity there for anyone making studies or checking out the underground or whatever. What's happening? Maybe that's a better question to the councilor responsible for transportation.
Currently, we are going through the process. We are waiting for our report to come back as to our final functionality report for the bridge. Previously, we had asked for what the possibilities were and now we are asking for amounts of money to proceed with the bridge land. So we are currently waiting for that report to come back to us and we are hopeful that it will be back to us shortly.
Thank you, counsel, through the mayor. Mr. Mayor, I didn't know what a functionality report is.
Well, I apologize, Mr. Naught. We are currently waiting for the report to come back to tell us dollar amounts to build a bridge.
There was the, first part of the question had to do with finance, the bridge and the debt management plan. Is that correct?
Yes, there is an allotment. It continues to be allotment going forward for the bridge. When we go through this process, we, as you know, in living across from the bridge, Mr. Naught, that there has been activity on there and soil sampling, et cetera. So we're still, as Counselor Draycott had mentioned, we're still awaiting the report which will come through administration and then to council in terms of next steps. But rest assured that the bridge is still front and center in this council's planning and you will see that as we move forward.
Further questions from the gallery?
Last quick question, Mr. Mayor, and it's a comment really more, thank you for the question period where anyone can ask a question. It's not a time for statements, it's a time for questions. So how have you felt about this first question period?
Well, I, you know what? I feel very good about it for a couple reasons. And I feel very good about the folks that come out and ask questions. I know Mr. Naught had raised the issue about why do we need something, we take a page from Brandon's about what happens if somebody comes out and they're profane or whatever. And usually the people of Portage aren't that way, so that's a good point. There will also be a chance for questions when we go into the capital plan, when Mr. Buds has a chance to present it at 7 o'clock. There's a chance for people to, the public to make comments on it or ask questions about it. So we do appreciate seeing... We do appreciate seeing people come out, I know it's a nice evening and sometimes not many people come to council, this evening there's a few more and that's very nice to see. I should give a plug right now, the next council meeting we have will be on Tuesday, May the 24th, right after Victoria Day, and that one will be held at the PCU Center, so you may even get a cup of coffee out of it if you come out to it. And we would, I know it's nice weather, but if you get a chance, come on out on that Tuesday evening. What? Sorry? And a donut, we'll see what the budget says, we've gotta check with finance.
We completely accept donuts, Mr. Knott.
Were there any other questions from the gallery? Okay, well, we are gonna adjourn committee and we're gonna take a break and at 7:00 we're going over the capital plan, right here, I'd invite all of you to stay for it. We are adjourned at 6:50 computer time, thank you.
But it does work out to, on an average of $100,000, assessed, sorry, assessed at $100,000, $16.23 is approximately the increase, and you can see the comparison there. Sweet, the next slide, you have heard me, excuse me, talk a lot about where our mill rate is and what we've done in the past, and I know that media has picked up on and we were ranked in the top three in the past in terms of our mill rate. But I think this is a positive trend lined in this graph. It shows that our mill rate is dropping. So, the only way that we're making headway in our efforts to be competitive in the province is if our reduction in our mill rate is more than comparable municipalities, which we do not, we do not have that data as of yet, but we will be bringing that forth over time. But from my perspective and from, I guess, from an economic development standpoint, when investors are looking at Portage Prairie as a destination, we have to have the amenities, but we have to be competitive. And so, when we are in top three in a peer group, which honestly is not even that geographically, you know, not close to us, it is, it's something that is noticed if our mill rate is higher. We also get asked what percentage of our tax bill that's paid is municipal and what is school division, so approximately 61% of the taxes that are collected is for municipal use and 39% is for the school division. So this graph, next one, a linear graph, property value assessment and tax collected and mill rate, kinda giving an idea of the blue line. Your assessment has been going up if you're a resident in Portage and you've also heard me say, I think that's a good thing. Because I know it is something that draws the eye of a lot of citizens if their assessment rises a lot. But that means that there is some positive movement going on in your city, that things are growing, there's investment being made, and it is a good thing if you are growing as a city. The one thing that you don't wanna see parallel growth on if you're a citizen is the mill rate going up at the same pace as what your assessment is, and you can see in this linear graph too, that you do see a reduction in the mill rate as assessment has been climbing. So, we are managing that, I would say, as a council. So what happens to reserves when you start spending money to operate the city? This is, again, the green is utility, the light blue is fuel tax and the dark blue is our general reserves. And you can see that there has been, you know, gaps that have been created throughout the years in these reserves. Primarily the utility, you see it growing and I think we all know why the utility reserve is growing. We do have to set aside funds for our, for utility, or sorry, for nutrient removal project. You can see the ending 2016 balance in nutrient removal will be an operating surplus of about 11.6 million and we are within all legislative requirements here in terms of reserve balances. So, on a positive note, on our debt, a comment was made tonight in terms of our debt level. In 2016, our city outstanding debt drops to $12 million, or a little bit more than $12 million. Water and sewer rate averages increases 6%, and that's previously approved through the utility board, increases in our water and sewer rates. But you do see a significant amount of debt that's taken on through the following years, and again, that's related to nutrient removal. This does take into account though that we're borrowing at a pace that would be higher than what we want to, and we, as I've been quoted and I stand firm on this, if we do not get the level of support that's required from both the federal and provincial governments, it's not within the city's capability to borrow enough to complete the project as it stands right now. So really, it is almost a, it's a standstill project unless you've got levels of government coming to the table. So where does the city's revenue come from? And another graph kinda just shows where it comes from. Approximately 11, or the bulk of it really is, from utility rates and taxes, so $21 million. We do get grants and we take money from reserves, but those are kinda your three main areas or four main areas where the funding does come from. And again, the utility, this is a reminder, the utility is self-funding, so the utility rates that are charged and the revenues that we collected funnel into utility expenditures. So it's not that we take from kinda general reserves or general taxation that goes into utility. So then, where does the money that you collect get spent? There it is, the general operating fund receives 43%, the utility operating fund of 27% and reserve withdrawals of 26%. And then, yes, we're on the same slide. So, from our general operating fund, where do those funds that we collect, so from the taxation dollars that we collect from citizens, where do those money get spent on average? And you can see that there is a significant demand on our dollars, dementia payments, so that's debt payment, 27%, government services 13%, policing 21%, transportation 13% and parks rec 15%. So, you can see that there is a, so just as a reminder, government services, that makes up fire protection, animal control and parking meters. So, those two in terms of public safety and recreation, demand a lot of dollars out of the monies that we're collecting from citizens. And quite frankly, it's the services that they expect and we should deliver, so, but that is a breakdown of kinda where those funds go. Then if we flip to the utility side of things, where do they go? It's water supply of 44%, investment of capital of 28%, this is, but will go up, obviously with the capital. We transfer about 23, or almost a quarter of the money that we collect into reserves, we make some debt payments, that will go up if the project that we're talking about is undertaken in the fashion that it is. And then sewage collection and disposal, about 13%. So, capital plan, this is what I've been stated since saying that this capital plan as it's constructed doesn't take into tax increases into consideration. So, those are really light blue tabs on, or sorry, very small tabs on the bottom, but economic development is the blue, public safety is the green, and the blue is operations in terms of where that money would be spent. And then the operations breakdown is on the right-hand side at about $25 million with a significant investment in several areas in our city. So just to capture some of the items that are over $500,000 over a 10-year period, I think it's, it should be mentioned that we are proactive in our city and that we plan for 10 years. It's not a legislative requirement to do so, we do, it is five years only and we proactively look at 10. Now, that's not to say that anything that we have, you know, eye-glassed out for 10 years actually comes to fruition, but you do have to have a plan in terms of where the spending is going to take place and probably more importantly, where the money is gonna come from to address the spending. So Island Park Bridge, another $2 million. Just as a reminder, in our 2016 capital plan, there's a significant investment in our bridge already, so that's why it doesn't show a larger amount. Whether or not all of those funds get spent in 2016, if you look across the lake right now, I would suggest that the capital plan spending allotted to the bridge in 2016 will not come to fruition based on where we are in the time of year and the decisions that have not been yet made as of yet, so there will be a carry-forward amount into next couple of years. And again, some limestone path paving, we have to do some renewal reserves for heavy equipment, we have a pumper for the fire department that's established, and then you can see the rest of it. Another item that is moving up the 10-year plan is our Saskatchewan Avenue West project and it is really addressing the infrastructure above and below road surface as it relates to everything beyond 8th Street, basically out to the Co-op Mall. So that is something that this council has made, you know, is a pressing issue in our 10-year plan. So moving to a capital plan now, just to our utility side, previously that was our operating side, there is a significant amount, and I won't go through all of it, but $132 million spent over the next 10 years on our utility. Water treatment plant reservoirs, $14 million. So that, you look at that, so water distribution, wastewater collection, $20 million right there, but if you look down, nutrient removal at city, $93 million. So again, we have to do this and for this type of planning, but again, this is not something that we could actually undertake on our own at that level of expenditures. We do it for planning purposes, but there would have to be an ejection from provincial and federal bodies. And granulated active carbon replacement is relates to our water treatment plant for another 7.4 million. And for that is almost like a big glorified Brita water filter for our drinking water out at the water treatment plant. So, very significant investment by our city and probably, not probably, it is historic in terms of the amount of money that is required from base infrastructure, and we hear a lot about that when we travel as councillors to conventions in terms of lobbying by AMM to different levels of government for infrastructure dollars. And as you can see in our city, we are not unlike everybody else in the amount of money that needs to be spent to maintain and expand the services that we're currently using and prepare us for the future. And again, I won't go through each one of these, but those are some items over $500,000 in our utility capital plan. So, as always, we have it available on our website, so we have our tax calculator in there, we have the detailed capital and new additional listings, our financial plan and our grant listings. So, that can kinda, that concludes the PowerPoint presentation and I will leave the public hearing open, if there's questions as relates to that slide presentation or anything else, we can address those. And then we will close and we will go into second and third reading.
So, questions from public regarding the capital plan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the chairman of the finance committee, a well-presented, quick thing, good, nice color. Will a piece of information in a written form be sent to all households in the city on this? When it is stated that things go up on the website, that's all very well. There's a lot of people who don't have computers, they don't work on computers, they don't care, whatever, but they do read the information that comes out once every six months or whatever it is from the state council. Would council consider putting out a publication, doesn't have to be glossy, can be three or four pages, on this kind of thing, saying this is what's gonna happen?
Just to answer your question, we will, and just have recently discussed council briefs, it's a familiar document that goes out into mailboxes of residents. The financial or my committee does at this time of year a more comprehensive news message that captures exactly what we're talking about and that will be distributed to each household in a paper format. Will it be three to four pages long? Probably not, but it will be a summary of the document that we're talking about here tonight.
That would be yes.
Thank you. Second question on the same thing, and that is that the circular that was the first slide says that the process is continuing and is ongoing. Nowhere in the process is there a specific way of asking people what they would like to see spent? The information given to council comes out in detail, very well presented, once the potential budget is fulfilled. But there doesn't seem to be a process of involving people first before the budget comes up into detail. Is there any indication by council that a different understanding of what a budget process might be is being considered?
So I think in the planning cycle, Mr. Knott, it clearly identifies public consultation. And quite honestly and candidly, Mr. Knott, you are pretty much the only individual that approaches council with that direct, as a direct question like that, we are not, as council inundated with additional requests for that. Not to say that that wouldn't, that we wouldn't entertain that. We have hosted budget consultation meetings before and honestly are poorly attended, not because we haven't made an effort to make them well-known, I know we've done a good job of trying to make that. So, you know what, we are trying to engage the public in this process, the fact is that there is different levels of willingness of participation and we welcome any commentary that you may have as it relates to the budget process through our public consultations. But will we change beyond what we're currently doing? Quite likely not for this planning cycle.
Other questions from the gallery? No other questions? Okay, Counselor Buds?
Resolved at the public hearing for the 2016 tax levy bylaw, 16-8645, and the 2016 financial plan now be closed.
Moved by Counselor Buds, seconded by Counselor Wall. Any comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion? And that's carried.
So we've, as council, have gone through this first time, last meeting, and then we've gone through this presentation, I know you've read it, I am not going through line per line in this report. I will highlight though, as Mr. Knott had mentioned, just to highlight again, just so everybody's clear, the 10-year plan includes no increases in taxes for capital projects in any of the 10 years. Not to say that we wouldn't have to address it if we were taking some of this on, but when we build it, it does not include tax increases.
So it is a recommendation of finance committee and I so move that bylaw number 16-8645 being a bylaw of the city of Portage Prairie to authorize a levying and raising of property taxes for school and municipal purposes for the year ending December 31st, 2016, be given second reading.
Moved by Counselor Buds, seconded by Counselor Wall. Any comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion? And that's carried.
And that bylaw 16-8645 be given third and final reading, finally passed, signed and sealed.
Moved by Counselor Buds and seconded by Counselor Wall. All those in favor of the motion? And that's carried. And we are adjourned at 7:20 PM. Thank you.